Across the street, or next door is the county's shopping center. And across the street is Franklin. That's where they keep their prices. I'm the one that had to get fired. 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 Across the street, or next door is the county's shopping center. And across the street is Franklin. That's where they keep their prices. I'm the one that had to get fired. 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 We call this public hearing, number two of every state in the world. We're looking to stand down and say the same things as Blackberry. It's critical.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Something I want to say before we get started here.
You can hardly hear you.
I can't hear you.
Very low.
Okay, is that better? No. Okay. Can't see if that's any better. Is that better? Okay. This is your public hearing on the food and beverage tax. And the ordinance is for the pool or the fairgrounds. So who will work on? You'll have comments, which is a sheet in the back, which you'll have to call them back and get here in a minute. If you sign up to talk, you'll have three minutes. And thirty, when you have thirty seconds left, Kristy down here is our timekeeper. She will make a noise, then you, at the end you'll hear another noise. In three minutes, right? I would ask that everybody be respectful. This council will be respectful to you. I want you to be respectful to the rest of the council, everyone else inside the audience, so we can get along and get everything going good. Down on this end, we got Ms. Chadwell. She'll be taking the minutes. Abby will be backup minutes. And Ms. Molly will be our timekeeper. Prepare. Do you have your time counts going, you want to say? Okay. I didn't bring my sheet, what makes you ready?
I'll grab it, Dan.
It was starting Mr. Frank MacIntyre.
As much as you're guarding as far as like food vendors on the square, 4-H, fairgrounds, how is all that going to be as far as the vendors, that type of food? How's that getting taxed?
Should be at the end. We're gonna have to take questions.
I just signed up for questions.
Okay. I'll call on you at the end, okay? I'm not real sure either. Kill crying.
The miner actually questioned the...
Yeah. Okay, Toby Banana?
Mine was a question also, several maybe. I'd kinda like to see what's gonna happen here before I ask my questions too.
Okay, Mr. Whitaker.
Mine is comments, not questions. From everything that we've been told and heard so far, informally or formally, there's a potential for this food and beverage tax. But it's also, has been said that we have approximately $3 million available to refurbish or rebuild a pool that may be comparable to what we have. My comments are, and feelings are, in everyone I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people in the past couple of weeks. We shouldn't go into debt to build a swimming pool. We should build what we can afford to build, and be proud that we don't owe anything on it when we're done using tax dollars that's already benefited, and utilize it in that way. If it's not necessary to spend it all on a pool, then take the balance. And again, my comment is to divide that between whether it's the fairgrounds and/or every other community in DeCater County, the parks, departments for Westport, New Point, St. Paul, Billhausen, and make sure that everybody gets some attention if they need. I guess that's the comments. Don't spend more than we got.
Mr. Jim McIntyre.
To reiterate what he's saying, you know, this county's got a budget. You've already got grants. We've been told with three, three and a half million dollars. You know, this pool has never made a profit. It's always been subsidized by taxpayer dollars. Now you're looking at building a bigger pool. It's gonna require four taxpayer dollars to subsidize than you're already doing. It can't even break even. It has never broke even, let alone made a profit. So why do you think building a bigger pool, using more tax dollars subsidies to maintain? It's a good type of investment, if it's beyond me. Everybody has to live within a budget. If you have one, I would suggest you live within it, like you expect everybody else to.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, David O'Cam?
I'll pass it this time. I'll just second what Jeff, Mr. Whitaker said.
Gloria Geringer?
I'm a taxpayer of DeCater County and the city of Greensburg. I do not have children, yet I pay school tax. If I wanna watch my nieces and nephews play sports in these facilities, I have to pay. The high admission fees for traveling tournaments at the sports complex are unaffordable for me, so unfortunately I cannot go. For those of us who do not swim, we pay taxes to upkeep a swimming pool. For those of us who do not have time to read or enjoy reading, we pay taxes for the library. I work in an office where I see people nearly daily who cannot pay their rent and utilities. I had six cases today. I have also seen an exorbitant amount of wasted taxpayer money on things that were done without serious thought, never completed because there was little to no transparency to the public, and/or the project went a different direction. Putting an extra tax burden on individuals has gotten out of hand for some nice-to-haves versus need-to-have. I'm not against a swimming pool. I'm not against libraries or schools. However, I am against going for more than we need and placing the burden of the cost on the taxpayers. It appears from the awards that proposal for the aquatic center was already decided for the benefit of committee member resumes before it was shared with the general community. This then leaves county taxpayers with the burden of cost, while those with higher aspirations will likely leave the area. And this is upsetting to me. I've been a lifelong resident in DeCater County. It is not just the initial cost that concerns me, but future staffing, upkeep, and maintenance costs. It seems every time we get finished with one tax, we are given another one. There also needs to be consideration for memberships and admission charges to use a pool similar to the YMCA to help with the burden of cost. The two and a half percent county income tax in this county is higher than the average county tax in Indiana, and we keep adding things to make those taxes increase. Eighteen of ninety-two counties in Indiana have the same or higher income tax in DeCater County. We are nearing the level of the state tax rates of 3.23%. Additionally, property taxes continue to rise, and for those of us on a fixed income, it is getting harder to be able to stay in our homes. I ask the project be scaled down to a community pool without the lazy rivers, waterfalls, water slides, et cetera. Moving more people into the community for amenities does not help if they don't pay their regular bills. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Richard Mays?
I had questions.
Is that Janine Howe? Doctor Howe. James Howe. He's wise like a dog.
Well, I'm here to express my support for adopting the food and beverage tax for the purpose of building Aquatic Center and improvement of the fairgrounds. These are the things I need, we need in our community. While the Aquatic Center will operate only during the summer months, this is when our youth have the greatest need for additional recreational facilities. On summer evenings, certainly would offer an opportunity for families to get involved in swimming in the pool. And if for no other reason than economic development, we should build Aquatic Center and work on the fairgrounds. We build an airport to recruit businesses here. Why, and most of us will never be able to use that airport, we don't fly. Why not build a pool to recruit workers? And all of us could use a pool. We'd be able to demonstrate too, that we would continue to invest in the infrastructure of our community to make it better. Since the idea of adopting a food and beverage taxes was first discussed, I've calculated what additional costs that would entail when I died down. What I discovered over the last several months is the cost to me would be a dime or less for the meals that I ate out. And since a most of this taxes are, a good portion are due to those from outside of the county, it should be a minimum cost to taxpayers. And for this reason, my wife and I have put adoption of food and beverage tax on the construction of Aquatic Center. My children will not ever use this pool, they live out of state, as do my grandchildren. But as a taxpayer, I would support this for the benefit of the community and population. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Roswell?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm guessing we're all wondering the same question. We still have not seen anywhere on documents, as I have not, of what the total cost of the project's going to be. I think the flyers will post it on the Come Swim With Us website. There's discrepancies in it. One place states that it's going to sunset after the bond is paid off. The next place states, this is for twenty years. Then another place says that we're going to collect $650,000 a year estimated for this tax. Multiply that times five, that's three, made in $250,000, which stated in the flyer that that would pay one quarter of the cost. Times four, thirteen million dollars for the project. You know, and I've not seen any figures in it. That's just from what the flyers state. So, you know, is it going to sunset? Is it going to be twenty years? You read the Indiana code where it is written. Twenty years is what it says. It's nothing about sunset. We need a pool. But, as Mr. Whitaker said, we've got three. That doesn't make a nice pool. And we have Philly that's been out there now for over twenty-five years talking about the ballpark. Nice and simple. Used to be huge tournaments. Majority of you sitting here used to know when the girls came and played, their regional and district tournaments here. EDC people, that's where your mind is at. You're not gonna have people come from Cincinnati, from Indianapolis to Greensburg, and spend the weekend to go to a water park, where you can go to Great Wolf Lodge, you can go to French Lake and enjoy there. We need a pool for kids that want to swim, affordable for kids to go to in the summer for two months' time. Thank you.
I've got a couple of signatures I can't read, so... Emily?
It's Babe. We'll do that question.
Okay. Shady Pines?
Adding on what a few other people have said this evening, I just feel like, at this current time in the economy, we should not add extra burdens onto the community, even though it is just one percent. That one percent adds up. I truly feel like the pool needs to be built with the grant money that's already allocated.
and spend the weekend to go to a water park where you can go to Great Wolf Lodge, you can go to French Lake and enjoy there. We need a pool for kids that want to swim, affordable for kids to go to in the summer for two months' time. Thank you.
I've got a couple of signatures I can't read, so. Emily?
It's me. We'll do that question.
Okay. Okay, Shady Pines.
Having on what a few other people have said this evening, I just feel like at this current time in the economy, we should not add, we should not add extra burdens on to the community, even though it is just one percent. That one percent adds up. I truly feel like the pool needs to be built with the grant money that's already allocated to Decatur County for this pool, and that once this pool, because you're getting a free pool, once this pool starts generating revenue, then you can add on to it. You know, just don't stop with the pool. You can add on to it. I just feel like, as a small business owner, I absorb costs that I probably shouldn't be absorbing just to ensure that people can come out and they can have a good time, they can enjoy themselves, they can eat, they can drink. And I just feel like the burden on a small business owner between added paperwork, added costs with accounting, added costs with updating POS systems, I just feel like this is just really a lot to be asked in the community for, to begin with. Small business owners, community members, I just, you know, I just feel like it's a lot. And I just feel like that this is not the proper time. I'm not saying we don't need a pool. I'm saying build a pool. But I just really feel like you should not be comparing to what Moreverna does, and what Shelbyville does, and what this community does, because we're a different community than everybody else. Decatur County is a unique breed, a unique community. We're different than everybody. So I just feel like you shouldn't base what everybody else is doing. I feel like you should base it on the needs of the community, and the community does not need a lazy river and a splash pad. We need a pool that the kids can go to, that's affordable for parents to spend money on for memberships. I just feel like now is not the time to be doing this. You know, we don't know if we're going to have another COVID outbreak. We don't know what's going, what the near future's going to hold. So why burden the community? Then when you add on to it the fairgrounds, when we had our original meeting, the fairgrounds was never mentioned. So now you're putting this one percent food and beverage tax on felt fairground improvements too. At least if the food and beverage tax went into play with the swimming pool, that you had a break there because our understanding was, was that once that debt was paid, that tax would come off, or twenty years, whichever's first. Now when you add fairgrounds on to it, you just put a whole open, you just open that up to, once this goes into play, we're going to be twenty years on this tax. So I just really feel that it's unfair that you keep adding more to it to try to sweeten the pot to get it to go over. I just feel like we need to stop, spend the three million on the pool, and roll on with it.
Ida and Joe Cotton? Tell them, get them far.
My first item is, I believe the math is incorrect on the sheet. It says that it costs us twenty-one eighty-two per seventy-five days to operate. I think it's more like twenty-one hundred dollars. So, figuring the account definitely might be a bit of a problem. I was also curious, and I know this is more of a question, but I'll ask it later, but why was there a first reading as a council meeting about this before it was brought to the public? I just think that's a little concerning, especially since at the time of that first reading, there were no projected revenues, expenses, or the cost of the pool. It was just an idea. And we just thought that that was not right. It shouldn't have been all brought to the public before our first reading, or up for public comment before the first reading. That was just my comment.
Regis.
Thanks for letting us all talk this evening. I guess the thing that, you know, bothers me is so much what everybody else has been talking about too. You know, where everybody is really strapped, you know, for the money and everything else, trying to make ends meet. And to go with such an elaborate pool, just makes no sense to me. I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to have it. Be really nice to be able to go and do that and brag about it and talk about it and everything else. But like one of them just said, to think about how much is that going to bring into the community and stuff, it's not going to happen. You know, and we might end up keeping it going and stuff, you know, but it's going to take a lot of money. And where's that money coming from? And, and I know, you know, a comment was made, it's only a dime or something like that. It ends up being a lot more than that. You know, those poor people that, you know, the restaurants and stuff in town that have to put that money in, and now they have to find somebody to segregate it all out, and they have to then send it in and stuff. There's a lot more expense to it than what, you know, it's being looked at and stuff. And so I just think that let's get a normal pool, but let's not be going overboard. I mean, it just, to me, makes no sense. And I'm one of them paying for it. So I guess I had the right to say it. Thank you.
Good morning, Robyn.
Hello, just a couple of things. I'm here on behalf of the Parks Board as well as the Ready Program, the Redeeming Authority. The pool initially was suggested as a program or project for the Ready, Ready Program from the state back in two thousand twenty-one based on a couple of input. We inserted it as a, as a county project back then. We were awarded funding, as he said, and was matched with barber funds. And since then, originally it was put into the project list as improvements. When it came to the end of two thousand twenty-two, we found out that it had failed so much that it wasn't able to be opened in two thousand twenty-three. The committee that was nominated by the Park Board is looking at this project as one of attraction and retention. Right now, it used to be that you find a job and you find a place, you live in that place. Right now, you find a place to live and then you find a job. So we want to make the community a place if people want to live, they want to stay, and the kids want to come back and to see that out in the pool that's been part of our community for six years, be part of that. And we're looking at surrounding attractions to kind of influence us to try and, and match some of those, because we are losing people to other pools. We've seen the place of data on that. And we want to recapture some of that. And also, as the gentleman said, coordinate with the, the other amenities that we have out there, the fairgrounds, the, the ballparks and such. Fairgrounds have always been part of the ordinance since, in the original draft, and it was presented previously, because that was another project in the ready, in the ready application that was wanting to be covered by the county. So we, we had suggested this tax, one, that had parameters on it such as the set rate, set parameters, and it can only be used for quality life issues as well as water or sewer, but we don't have our water and sewer system. So that was, that was a means of coming before you with a funding opportunity. This is part of the discussion. We understand that. And, and we appreciate the input here. But it is something that, you know, we're trying to do with the best intentions, and we see that as attractive for helping to grow the community and return people to, and I'll just help answer questions and stuff as to figure out how we got to the, after this.
Hans Van.
For the ones that don't know me, my name's Hans. I own Carradell Square Smokehouse on the west side there. Honestly, I see both sides for the Aquatic Center and, you know, against it. And I see what we're trying to do, you know. I, I really do. I think we're trying to grow Greensburg. I think we're trying to, you know, kind of get toward like being like Columbus or, or something like that. And if anybody was going to profit off of this, I'd be one of the few. Because, you know, we're trying to get outsiders and we're trying to get people, you know, just to get money, you know, enjoy Greensburg and go out, go out and do stuff. So if I only cared about myself, I only cared about the bottom line, you know, I'd just keep my mouth shut. But I think the food and beverage tax, I think it's stealing. I really do. Especially for something that's only going to be used two months, maybe three months a year. And yeah, it's just one percent, a dollar on a hundred. But like people have been saying, it does add up. And we're just a penny pension. And like, I know we're saying fifty-two percent of outside sales come from, or fifty-two percent of sales come from outside residents. We can't track that. We can't track cash. We don't know that for certain. We don't. I mean, I get a lot of people from outside, but I mean, I'm also advertising on billboards and stuff. You know, there's some restaurants in town that just do local. So it, it just varies. I mean, I think this is a bad time, and I think the budget's like, just too much for it. But I think we need like a splash pad, absolutely. Do I think we need, you know, all the slides and all that kind of stuff? You know, and we just don't have to have more lifeguards. And it's hard enough to find people to work just in any jobs, you know, and especially to pay, no offense to you guys, you guys aren't paying people enough. There's no way. You know, you're not going to get somebody for twelve, thirteen, fourteen bucks. I got a girl that just graduated and she's making seventeen plus bonuses. I mean, you guys aren't paying seventeen. My boys are making almost twenty. And you guys aren't going to do that. So there's no way that I think you guys can have a proper amount of people. So, I mean, best of luck, but I do think it's stealing. I honestly do.
I don't have a problem with the pool or even the Aquatic Center. I certainly don't disagree that the fairgrounds and some of the buildings over there need attention. Not even sure that I'm opposed to the food and beverage tax. I am opposed to it at this time. We just came through the pandemic. Services got slammed. Services got slammed hard. Some were able to figure out a way to, to change their model of doing business and weather it a little bit better than others. Some were not. They're still recovering. The idea that you can even go to a fast food restaurant and sit down and have a burger and fries at eight o'clock, well, that depends on which fast food restaurant it is. And why is it that their dining rooms are closed, they can't get people? So they're struggling. At least that's the way I see it, and I'm not in the food service industry. But I'm a patron of food services, and I see them struggling. So we're going to do one more thing that makes their life complicated? I'm a lifelong resident of Decatur County. I grew up going to the pool, whether we had the special water slides and lazy rivers and things. If that's what the kids now want. Okay. I'm a four, past four-H member. I spent a lot of summers at the fairgrounds and getting trash after the fair. And my question as a person of my generation is, where's the skin in the game here? We've got grants, and that's great. But I haven't heard anything about any fundraisers. My God, when I was growing up, we had an affon for everything. We had dance ahtons, walk ahtons, bike ahtons, rock ahtons. We were a fun all over the place. And why? Because we wanted stuff. We wanted a service. We wanted to, to be able to do something or buy something or have something in the community. And the community pulled together to do it. Not just like, well, I want it so somebody raises tax so that I can have it and not put my skin in the game. I just think that maybe we should go back to skin in the game. And then if it's still not there, we can look at it less than the one percent of the tax to get it all the way over the goal line. You know what I'm saying? The other thing is, I'm a little concerned that we're asked to give our opinions before questions are answered, because that may direct the questions that we have. That's all I got to say. Do as it were.
Okay, if anyone else has any, I'll open it up. You got any comments or opinions? If not, we'll take a few questions.
I have a comment next to me.
Come in.
My name's Toby Banata, and, you know, this is the first meeting like this I've been to. I've heard about this proposed pool and this one percent tax and all of that. And I'm sure everybody in this room is a little sick of paying for something else for someone else. One lady mentioned your property tax and schools and all of that. Well, fine. Now, I think if we've got some funding from feds, state for this pool, fine. But the bottom line is, I do not do something if I cannot afford it. Now, building something, I've seen the figures, and I've built enough things in my life. We better add about ten percent to it. That's just a natural thing. So that said, and another issue here was section five of this, you know, rehabilitation of pool facility improvements, fairground, the pledge under the MO-K, et cetera, et cetera. But right here at the bottom, revenue derived from imposition of food and beverage tax may be treated by the county as additional revenue for purposes of fixing budget for the budget year during which the revenues are be distributed to the county. Now, this one percent doesn't sound like a lot, but all right, we're doing the pool, fairgrounds, park, what have you. But the excess money, if it doesn't take what, what it's supposed to, what's the county going to do with the extra money down the road? When's this going to be raised from one percent to two percent, three percent? Once it toes in the door, next is the foot, the knee, and all of that. You know, I just think everybody's just a little bit tired of paying for somebody else's things. You know, everybody's gripped. I'm sure you all have. Everybody in here's , you know, gripped about paying for some for somebody else. But the bottom line is, if you can't afford it, shouldn't do it. There's enough other sports around, like the ball diamond out here, golf, school sports, all of it. Kids need to do that. For the last fifteen, twenty years, school participation has been down. I think some of these parents need to get kids more involved with school activities. You know, the lady with the fundraiser idea, pretty good idea. You know, there's other things people can do other than just hit us with the one percent. Appreciate the time.
Okay, you have another, you have a comment?
A question.
Well, we're going, we're going to start here in just a minute.
All right, thanks, Andrew.
I got some people got questions, and, okay, Mr. Buckett, said you have a question. Okay, Mr. Craig? And we'll try to answer.
So, do we have a total amount that this is going to cost?
Those three I've never seen.
So we're going to tax and then decide that?
Well, we haven't decided we're going to tax yet, but I think the councilors will run that one. How much money will I spend first?
The Parks and Rec has put out an RFQ for the, for the project, and it's due back, I don't know the dates exactly, November twenty-fourth.
So can you walk me through the timeline? So we need to get an RFQ, and we're talking about implementing, when do you vote on this tax?
Twenty-first. Well, we all need to get it to twenty-first. Because it's been presented through, we have got it.
So you'll vote on the tax, and then a few days later you'll get kind of, is this RFQ binding? Is it like a solid, not to exceed proposal?
The RFQ was delayed because of the funds that are involved, and they had to be advertised in a certain way. We have the ability to stand down on that vote until the following month, which is probably what we'll end up doing. So that we can see what those RFQs bring back.
So this RFQ process, is there a construction manager, or how are you managing this process?
I don't have any answers.
That's a perfect question.
Come in.
On the Parks and Rec, the RFQ process is, we sent out the bid, we're going to be talking to very submitted, select, using the, the Parks select, using the, the Parks Committee that was assigned. The actual commissioners will be approving the final, uh, selection. Doesn't commit us to any project whatsoever, but it'll help us with the pro- process, getting an idea of what the costs were. Uh, if you go about, uh, I feel weird standing over here. Sorry, uh, behind you, I don't want. Uh, but if, if you go about construction in different ways, it can lead to additional savings. And we're well aware that we're not, we're, nobody's asking to implement any tax until we get hard numbers on the actual projects. We hope to have them by now, uh, but because of the way the RF, the RFQ had to be, uh, advertised, it was delayed it further till, uh, past the last council meeting, so we're, we're gonna delay that, uh, the final reading until, or actual diverse readings, because the other, you guys didn't have a formal reading. But, uh, until, until those numbers are, are number.
So can somebody walk me through that timeline? I hear what you're saying. So are we voting on the tax at the next council meeting?
I think we have to.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
We don't, we don't have.
We've already went through it once. It's up to the council to table it. It's not, it's can be.
Well, we, I, I guess I would.
I mean, I've checked. I've done my check and too. It is up to the council to table it.
Okay, it would be the recommendation of the committee then, and that, that we deny.
We can either vote on it at the next meeting, or we can table it.
So let's just keep talking hypothetical here. So we get an RFQ that says ten million, and we got three million of a grant. And then we got a bond that's, you know, and I've had the benefit of seeing your revenue projections of five million, so there's a gap, now.
Well, this doesn't mean we're gonna spend ten million dollars. Yeah, we don't have the money, then we're not gonna spend ten million dollars. That's why we table it, to see what we come in at. I think we're, we'd like to see the number two we don't have yet, but we're not gonna, I'm not gonna vote on something till I see what the number we're looking at. We're certainly not gonna spend ten million dollars if we don't have ten million dollars.
So you're saying you're not gonna implement a tax until we all get to see a legit budget that can be reviewed by the public?
Tax won't be voted on until we're all got the numbers that we need.
That's my pick.
That makes me feel good.
We can make it into a formal decision that way.
Well, and there's another missing piece to that total too, which a couple of people brought up as far as fundraisers. That would be the gap, right? So if we found out that the ideal pool would be nine or ten million dollars, and we've got those figures that you said, then we do an outreach to the public and say, how do you want this pool to be built? What would you like to see? Are you in support of this project? If so, we can do this. If not, we can do this. It's, it's not an all or nothing, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Penley? Sharon Pascal? Okay. I take it Mr. Banata, you?
Yep.
You're okay?
You already, you already took care of the. One, yeah, I did, yeah. I did run out of time. I was gonna hit everybody up too. If anybody has contacted any kind of a real estate developer that does this for a business, you know, that builds water parks or such things like that, uh, to go in partners and, and take a cut of the profit or something, and have them build it. Yeah, has anybody talked to a real estate person, developer? There's a suggestion right there too?
Thanks, sir. Anyone else have any questions, concerns? Yes, sir. Come on over there, come on over there. I want everybody to hear you.
I was just wondering if anybody had talked to the YMCA to see how many days their pool has been closed this year due to lack of lifeguards.
Yep, yep. That would probably be the, the pool committee that's taking gathering that day.
Because I know several times we've tried to go up there and the pool's been closed because lack of lifeguards. So it's just something to consider.
Anyone else have any questions? Come on over there.
I did a little research, and I guess it's questions for Brian or Deanna. Um, we, we say the food and beverage tax is just one percent, and that can't be changed. I believe that's true for the county. But if you look in the Food and Beverage Tax in Hamilton County, I think it's Hamilton and Carmel. Carmel is actually paying two percent on that food and beverage tax, while the county is only paying one percent. So, King Greensburg, if this goes through, King Greensburg add one percent tax to that. So the city's actually paying two percent, and the county would just be paying one.
By state code, yeah, they're allowed to do that. That's not, that hasn't been a discussion here. But if, if that would have to go through the whole project, process through the city, and what the city spends it all is up to the city.
So it's possible the city could have to.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of places, particularly in the Donut Counties, that you pay, you're paying a two percent.
And how does that work? Do we get like, you know, five years down the road, and like, hey, we're heard, and we got, can that one percent be added to the city at any time?
Uh, that's completely up to the cities. Yeah, that's up to the cities.
Um, another question is, I know we posted on the Parks, uh, Facebook page that, and you guys had mentioned, this is just twenty years, and it can't be changed, that, like, that's the law. I don't have the county, I don't have a couple counties listed, but when I did look this information up on the government website or the state website, there's been some counties that have food and beverage tax since the eighties.
Yeah, Mary.
Yeah, so that's when it started, was back then, but actually, the, there was some alleged potential misuse of those funds by certain locations. So they're really cracking down and not allowing a lot of places to implement this tax. So it's gonna be very well monitored because of, of history, but no, that's, that's set in stone. There's some discussion, there were other bills that went through this year about regulation of, so it's, it's very well watched and very well regulated.
The one thing that I do ask, if, if you guys are on post, like, hey, it's just one percent, it can't be changed. Final data is, I, I think we need to be honest, be like, hey, guys, it's possible it could be two percent if the city decides that. You know what I'm saying? Like, if you're just saying, hey, guys, it's just one percent, one percent, one percent, in hindsight, it could be two percent. I think that should be, I think the public should know that.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that's up, up to the city. I mean, that's not up to these guys' decision or up on this, on this particular situation.
I was saying, we're telling everybody, hey, it's just one percent, it can't be changed. That's a lot. It could be two percent.
Well, no, they can't, they can't change it for Decatur County, for the city of Greens, it would just be in the city of Greensburg, wouldn't be for the rest of Decatur County.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can't imagine the city implementing a tax right now in the, in the atmosphere.
Okay, well, come on over there. You got any questions? Come on over there. I'm gonna have a question.
I guess the one question that has already been answered, we do not have a total cost. So, I guess if you don't have a total cost, we don't have a budget set yet for any of this. I guess if we don't have a budget, then do we have a business plan for any of this? I guess not. Um, with recruitment and training being included in the business plan. Do we have a size, surface area of the pool size? Or do we have a vapor load number for the pool? Because that's gonna determine how many lifeguards we need. Each slide needs a lifeguard. Uh, we've got only, we've got seven lifeguards that are needed. Okay, somebody somewhere's come up with this, with this footage or a vapor size for this pool. Um, is maintenance and everyday operation of this pool going to come out of these tax funds? Or are we gonna raise the price of admission to get it so high where nobody can go to be able to cover that? Um, is our pool manager going to be trained and certified to train our lifeguards in CPR and everything that they need to have? Is our chemicals going to need to have a special certification to run that? Um, I don't, I don't know. And still, the question has not been answered, is it going to sunset when the bond is paid off, or is it one year?
As for the lifeguards and the trainings and things of that nature, um, yes, lifeguards and the cops will come by. But that doesn't mean that they cannot be recruited, cannot be found.
It may indeed mean that we as a Parks Department are going to have to train within our department, and that can be done. I don't think that's the responsibility of the pool manager. It will not be a requirement for the pool manager to do that for us, um, by recruiting them and trying to retain them. I know that the Y in the past has trained their guards, and then they agree to stay X number of months or something to that degree, or they get a membership or whatever. I'm not familiar with what the YMCA's policies. As far as the pool operation, we do have a certified pool operator on staff now. We trained one of ours, maintenance leader, Jody Vinegar. He intended, uh, training on that, and that, he takes care of the maintenance, of the chemicals, oversees the operation of the pool. I don't know for sure if I remember what your other question was.
Do we have surface area, so we know how many guards we really need, or do we have a vapor load?
Vapor load, I don't have that particular thing, but I do know that this out, the layout of this pool will actually not see, be much larger than the current pool is right now. Um, surface area of the pool, um.
The only reason that's being asked is because you can go to the 13 IAC code six dash two one dash one dash thirty-five, and it'll tell you how many guards are needed.
Right, but you have to remember too, that, that the numbers of what they recommend in the state of Indiana or whatever federal regulations say, the size of the pool does matter, but the layout of the pool is ever so much more important. With the current pool that we have now and the attendance levels that we've had, we were not technically required to have five guards on staff all the time. But we had to have five guards on staff because of the way the pool is. You have to have a guard watching the, the deep diving well. Somebody's watching the other side, you've got one on the top of the slide, the bottom of the slide, and then you have to have one on break.
Correct, correct, if I'm wrong, sorry to interrupt you, but we're gonna put in two slides with this project. So we have to have two guards in the slide. We're gonna have a diving well, so we've gotta have a guard there, correct, correct, correct?
Two, two slides will not change the number of guards per slide. They, they will operate off of the same tower, and so therefore, you will still have a guard at the top, you will have a guard at the.
One, we're both.
Which is what we have now. We still have two. We have one at the bottom and the top.
I would have to be that one boss responsible for these slides by myself. That'd be a lot, especially for.
But they will be coming in too, just a designated entry area, which will be a little different than the layout as it is right now. And as far as the other parts of the pool, all those figures and everything that you're asking as far as numbers of guards and things, that will all be determined when we know what features will actually go into the final plan based on what we can afford to do with our final plan. I mean, that proposal that went out was basically a, it's, it's a proposal. It was something that was put together with options that we gathered when we started, um, in early twenty-twenty-two, visiting other pools. There were four or five of us that went around, we've visited five, six pools. And it's not because we thought Greensburg needed everything that someone else had. But if, but the days of a swimming pool, just a pool are, are, they're gone. They're just not there anymore. The waters at these places that we went are all, most of the shallow areas, and they call them aquatic centers. It will always be a pool to me, and I still have to keep catching myself when we talk about this, that it's going to be called an aquatic center. But it's not because it's a water park. It's not Great Wolf Lodge or, you know, whatever.
But I think there's a lot of people who's given this conception that it's going to bring in this huge amount of tourism. No, it's not. You know that, I, that.
I don't know how many people, I'm not ever going to stand up here with a magic wand or a crystal ball. I can't tell you how many people are gonna come to the pool. But I can tell you that when we put that water sign in, I believe it was nineteen eighty-four, the attendance skyrocketed. Because we were the first one, we were the first one in the area to have that sign. And it brought back to life, it brought something new, exciting back to the pool. And if we, you know, if we were to renovate the pool as it is now, we would be required to do a lot more things than just renovate it to make it look what it look like now, because we would be, um, faced with going with codes. We'd have to get it up to grade. I mean, right now, we've got a lot of things out there that a grandpa did, let's face it, at sixty-three years old. So, things would have to be updated. So it, it wouldn't, if we tried to make it look like what it is today and just renovate it, the average person wouldn't see those changes, because they're not, they're not visible from the ground up. They're, they're, um.
And that's just like our building in the city. Nobody cares about what's underground, it's all about.
And, and if you go out there right now and you drive around the pool, you aren't gonna know exactly what led to the closure completely of the Alamo Pool, because they're not visible problems that they are made. So if we don't build something exciting, new, or whatever, we're not gonna bring those people back. And I'm not saying that it's, has to be X number of dollars, I'm not saying that at all. But it, it needs to be something fresh, new, and exciting if we want to bring life back to the pool.
And in this cost that's gonna be presented here in the next month or two, um, is demo included in this? The cost that's going to.
I would say that if.
Yeah, that would be. Is any unforeseen cost in it? Like, we dig up this area and there's a whole bunch of tanks? Or even worse than that, we find some kind of a lead pipe that has to be hauled to Ohio to a special landfill that's gonna have a hundred thousand dollars for each piece that has to be hauled? Or we need to get in seven thousand cubic yard of dirt, because that all has to be hauled away and others can have it?
That, that's all gonna be, I mean.
Which is why the likelihood of refurbishing the current pool is not really. There are just a lot.
Thirteen million dollars for this.
There are a lot of variables when you deal with a swimming pool in any way. I mean, there's no guarantee, I can't tell you that it's going to bring in an absolute exact number of people and exactly how many days we're gonna be open, or whatever the case may be, because we know, let's face it, weather plays a factor. There's a lot of things, you know?
But here again, you said that's not why we can't make the agreement, so no, no sort of testing is done to see if there is any. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna know, all these people are gonna come into the county to see this pool. And what kind of city parks, lake out there, pond, whatever you wanna call it? What are we doing with that? That's my question. Because you're gonna come in and look at this beautiful pool, but we've got this toxic pit over here, you should die out of it.
Well, I'm, do you want me to be honest with you?
Yeah.
That's a city.
That's true.
That's a more powerful separate, I mean, I'll be honest with you.
I just wanna.
You go across the street to a pool that's county.
Okay.
All right? Grabbing ride?
Uh, I'm not getting in that.
I thought it was sister, I could fill it for you guys if you want me to.
Anybody else have a question? Yes, David.
Dick Smith, I am on the Parks and Rec board, and we definitely need this aquatic center. Greensburg's a great town. I've only lived here fifty years, so I'm looking to do more, you know? Yeah, but, uh, this would be a great upgrade to our city and our county. People outside this will come to see what we've got, because it's gonna be good. Kids in the summertime, they need something to do, because you know more of them are getting into things they should not be. And I think an aquatic center would be positive. That's a good thing. We're here to talk about the tax, and you go to eat for twenty dollars, and you're gonna have drowning chance. There's nobody here that's gonna worry about twenty cents on twenty dollars. But there's a lot of them gonna pay that hundred dollars somebody mentioned, and that's only one dollar or more. And if that's too much, cut back on the adult beverages. Yes. Now, I've been to fifteen, the twelve, between twelve and fifteen different county fairs this summer, and last summer also, and more if you count the times I've been to Decatur County seven times, seven days in a row. And that would be great to improve our county fairground. Thank you, let's go with that tax.
Thank you, David.
I have one thing to say to that gentleman, is that the one percent is gonna come from a lot of adult beverages at your local restaurants, you have a brewery in town, you have Chili's, you have, you know, Big Sky, everybody sells adult beverages, so.
That's a good thing.
Well, you made it sound like a bathroom.
They're going to want more.
Right on, I'm sending.
So if I'm not mistaken, this had started, this proposal for this aquatic center had started in twenty-one. Is that when you applied for the grants?
Not, not for the, not for the aquatic center. That was for improvements to the pool.
To the pool? And then we turned into.
And the pool and the fairgrounds, correct.
Then when did we learn that the pool was not repairable?
Uh, late two thousand twenty-two.
Late two thousand twenty-two. And now we're in late two thousand twenty-three and we have nothing concrete. There's no concrete numbers. Everything's on hold. I would think that you would be better prepared with your numbers if you're asking the community to pay for such a large project.
This is still very much part of the project.
But it, I would just think that you would have been. I would think that this would be like your actual numbers on, you wouldn't be still waiting on reports or, or things like that. I would think that you would already have all that into play.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we, we don't have a budget. So we didn't, we wouldn't even know how to go about something like that. What we requested and what we are requesting essentially and, and providing some way of a means to pay for it is a budget for this project.
On something you don't even know what's going to come. Asking us to pay for something that you really have no clue what it's going to cost.
We will stay in that budget.
In the budget. And then another thing that kind of gets me that everybody's saying. It's, yeah. But another thing that kind of gets me is, is everybody's saying, well, it's only one dollar on every hundred. If you can't afford that extra dollar, then maybe you shouldn't eat. How about if we can't afford a ten million dollar project, that we don't have it? That we don't do it? If we can't afford it, why are we? I mean, for a dollar, you're asking for a dollar from the everyday worker that goes out and spends a hundred dollars on dinner for a family of four with a couple of cocktails. You're asking them to spend another dollar and it, it just, I'm just blown by this whole concept. And then my question, I have questions too. One of my questions is, is do we feel like putting the food and beverage tax on, in play? How are we going to monitor? I have a big grump with food trucks. I really have a problem with food trucks. How are we going to ensure that food trucks are paying their proper amount of that one percent of that food tax? How are we going to ensure that the ladies who are selling the cupcakes and the cookies at the farmer's markets pay their one percent food and beverage tax? How are you going to ensure that those numbers are getting met? And while you're trying to ensure that those numbers are getting met, do you feel like this could possibly hamper some of the other activities we have in town such as the, I mean, Friends of Fred, they're going to pay it anyway because they're like an organization. But what about like Crazy Dave's Tenderloin Wagon or Stacy's Tent and Tenderloin and stuff like that? Are they going to, Mini Donuts, you know? I mean, are you going to, is this going to deter these people from actually doing things in the community now? When we do the Fourth Friday downtown during the summer, is Kona Ice going to want to come to our community because we're going to charge them a one percent food and beverage tax on their food trucks? You know, is it going to prevent people, the little shish kebab lady at the fair? Is it going to keep her from coming? I mean, those are things that you take any of that into consideration when imposing this one percent. How do you regulate all of that?
Well, on your first question, how is it collected? It's collected in the same way as sales tax, it's self-reported.
And we know that some food trucks probably operate to their financial advantage more so, yeah.
Possibly. If they're breaking the law, they're breaking the law. That's not, for me. As far as the effect of, of losing either investment or people coming to the community because of the added one percent, we have not seen anything like, like that in any of the others.
Who's the microphone?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have, uh, did you get the first part about collecting, uh, is this on? Like, uh, it's collected just like the sales tax, uh, as far as the, the food and beverage tax is collected in the same way sales tax is self-reported. As far as losing, um, people or investment because of the one percent, we have not seen that or heard anything in other counties that have adopted this, be it one or two percent. I think the nearest one's Shelby County. Uh, they've had the food and beverage tax for quite some time right now and they have, they've not experienced any closings or anything that has been attributed to having that one percent tax that.
I feel like Shelbyville shouldn't even be counted because look where the bulk of their money comes from. They have a casino. If we have a casino, I'd say charge us two percent food and beverage because we know where to get char, we, it'd get paid in no time. So I think, I, I think bringing Shelbyville into it is kind of unfair.
Okay, uh, Nashville, Indiana just passed one. That's going to be implemented. Uh, Jasper, Indiana, um, off the top of my head, Columbia City is passing one. Um, all the donut, all the donut counties have it around Indianapolis. I mean, we, I can give you the list if you wish, but.
Right, she just pulled it up more and said, yes, those were my questions.
Faithful discussion.
Yeah, they got killers, friends. This shouldn't even be in here.
Okay, we got any more questions, Chris?
I'll leave play in front of you. So I'm, first off, I appreciate everyone in the county council members. You all are amazing, you do a good job. First problem I have is it seems like nobody knows what the hell's going on. I feel so much like, we talk about not bringing people to the county and we're going to bring people to the county. No one mentions about our housing issues. We need affordable housing. We're leaving that part out of this. We can bring people to this community if they want to live here, that's great, but they better have a good job to go to afford a three hundred thousand dollar house. Or anything, you know? Or anything here. It's, it's getting expensive. And I'll tell you, I'm a single, I'm a single income in my household for a family of five and it's getting to the point where I don't know if I can keep up in Greensburg. I moved out of Batesville because the tax is there. I love Greensburg. I love DeKalb County. I really enjoyed it. I sent a lot of boards and committees. I just ask that everyone on this council thinks about their decision. If you're a business owner, which many of you are, or a farmer, would you do this type of thing on your farm? Would you make this decision without having a business plan? If I came to you at a county council meeting and had this idea, you would say, Chris, you haven't brought crap to me. You don't know what's going on. Get out of here and come back next time. Now, I'm not, that's not nothing against you personally, but. You know, this is just my feeling. It's cool. I love pool, my kids, we go to the pool. But it's just like, what is going on? And many people in this room feel the same way. I believe. And that's all I'll say, I'll shut up.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I've asked all the same questions you've asked and I haven't gotten any answers.
Okay. That makes a little bit.
Is that right? Brian, I was about to ask Brian.
Yeah, it's a part of the process.
Yep. Now, and I will say this much, the reason we're having a public hearing after the ordinance was presented to the council is because this is a process. The ordinance is presented to the council. We have a public hearing, we hear from the public, then we vote or we table. So the twenty-first of November, we have a meeting at nine o'clock at the courthouse. You're more than welcome to come and watch. It'll be on our agenda because it has to be on our agenda. Now, whether it's table, voted for, turned down, I don't know.
All I'll say is I feel like the public, I feel like the people that have asked questions, the answers have been subpar. It's, there's going to be worse now than it's before. But no, anyway, I appreciate every one of you and everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
I wasn't going to say anything, but most of you know I'm Hillbilly Corner. I, um.
Hold down, talk to it.
I'm Hillbilly Corner. You all know the trouble that I had getting the little store open. And I just want to say that part of the problem of getting Hillbilly Corner open was because no one told me that I needed to have a business plan. I had no idea. I was just out there trying to start a business. No one told Tim or I that we needed a business plan. And that's where all the confusion for Hillbilly Corner happened is because we did not have a business plan written out to the people in the, in the zoning board, the people at the courthouse. Nobody had a business plan from us, but no one told us we needed that either. So it concerns me that there has not been a business plan, um, presented for this project yet. If that's what got me in all my trouble, I'm just trying to keep you all from getting in some hot water. The other thing that I don't know if, if this has been considered, I feel like DeKalb County does care about small businesses. I feel like, um, you guys really do care. And so in that, I would like to know, has anybody done any kind of research for us small businesses? How much is this going to cost me out of pocket to get a point of sale that will take care of this tax? And how much is this going to cost me extra for an accountant to take care of this tax? You know, what, what am I going to be out? And what are these other small businesses going to be out? Just to update our systems. Have you, have you looked at that?
Yeah, we've talked to the department, is this still on? Department of Revenue on that, uh, because that was a concern with us, what's going to be the burden. As far as the point of sale, a lot of point of sales already do that. It's just a, just a click of the button. If you, if you have a point of sale that collects sales tax, oftentimes it'll be able to collect that extra one percent food and beverage tax. As far as collection of it, again, it's just like sales tax. You can do it online. You can, you can, um, have it up online. If this does get passed and such, the Department of Revenue is committed to come down and have sessions as to how to do it and they're, they're there to, to answer any questions you might have.
So I'm going to rely on my teenagers to punch this in. They're going to have to know what is a food and beverage tax and what is not in my little shop. Is that correct?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, if you go like sales tax and such and the Department of Revenue can help walk you through as to what in your, in your particular story you want to talk about that, what, what is, what qualifies for the food and beverage tax and what doesn't.
Okay.
I just have one more quick thing. Um, and I don't know the answer to this. Does anyone know if, um, credit card transactions, if they charge three percent on the total amount or three percent on the amount without tax? Because some businesses are adding that three percent to the consumer.
I can't answer that one. I'm sorry.
In, in general, your percentage on the credit card is on the total. So would, would include the tax?
I have to say for my company, it's based on my contract with my credit card supply.
Any other questions about food and beverage tax?
Steve Freeman, At least Don't Shirk International. I'm on a big standing gun right now, so I'm worried about taxes. I paid property tax this morning, so I'm a little bitter today. I guess my question is, um, I'm glad to hear that Kenny said that, at least he's not going to vote until you get some RFPs back and understand what the numbers are. Let's just be hypothetical and say that this comes back at ten or eleven o'clock. Okay, and you guys object if, no, we're not going to go that route. We should go down that, you can't get it so bad. What happens? Do you not hear me?
No.
Can you speak up? So what happens if you guys vote down the pool idea? Do you pivot on this one percent food and beverage tax? Does that go away or what, what happens to that at that point?
Can we have to vote for the no? We have to vote for the no when you put the food and beverage tax on? We haven't voted for it yet.
I understand, but I'm saying if you get these RFPs back to the pool and they come back to you high and then you guys say, no, we're not going to go that direction, we're not going to do it. The way I understand it, maybe I'm wrong, is that the, you had to apply with the state and pick a project. Your project is the pool and the fairgrounds. So if you reject the pool idea, do you pivot, are you going to pivot to the, to the fairgrounds then? Or are you just going to drop the food and beverage tax?
That's just a vote we'll have to have. You know, the twenty-first of that, this month or later on the food and beverage tax.
But you, you have to have a project in order to approve that.
And, and there's a good chance that, you know, in that, with the RFQs and stuff, there'd be discussion as to cost of the project. If it is over like that, we could draw it down to put whatever budget that the council gives us, we could stay within that. That's, that's me personally saying.
Thank you.
Jeff Evans-Bowler, average day citizen, fourth cousin of Silicon Valley test, Ashland. Sorry about that. I have a question that a heap hearing, um, I'm not, I'm going to say right now, I'm not sure I'm for or against the beverage tax, food and beverage tax. But my question on heap hearing, what I keep hearing over and over is that this new aquatic center will draw people to Greensburg. They will bring them in here where they will spend their money. What, and I need some clarification, I guess. What are we doing with the innkeeper's tax? And can that innkeeper's tax, if people are spending the night here, can some of that money go for helping with this aquatic center? And if that innkeeper's tax, if we can get tournaments back into here like we used to have, there were quite a few, that would generate the money. Remember when the restaurants were packed on Friday and Saturdays because of the baseball tournaments? But can the innkeeper's tax alleviate someone's need for a food and beverage tax? And I don't know, I could be wrong, but have you looked at that, that option?
No, we'll play with it.
Well, I mean, I might speak to that as this director for this Greensburg. Innkeeper's tax, there is around four hundred, six, two, excuse me, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, we will take everything of that in years and it's not going to go.
Hand the microphone, please.
Yeah, the innkeeper's tax here is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and yeah, of course, we've talked about that. And, and I'll, you know, I have some board members here we can certainly look at allocating some money towards the pool project. I think that would be appropriate, uh, expenditure for our organization. But it, it is not going to make the kind of dent that the proposed food and beverage tax would make. I mean, you're, you're looking at, we, well, right now we make a commitment to smaller projects, which are community enhancement projects. We just, we had the fifty thousand dollars a year towards those types of things like the splash pad, the amphitheater, um, dog park, things like that that have gone along with the community, um, based on us, the, 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 we made our budget. Uh, you know, over the past couple of years, we've reduced that to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And still, um, that's going to be made to community enhancements every year. Uh, some of those dollars could be allocated certainly towards the pool project.
My question might come in now, sorry to interrupt, but if we have, if we're bringing people to stay all night here, which is what the innkeeper's tax specifically goes for, they're coming here for a purpose such as this, why have we made cuts to the, uh, in the tourism budget? I don't, I don't understand about that. Why do your, why, why is your budget this guy? Have you been giving out money, you're sticking out frequently to organizations that are bringing people to town?
We do still give out some grant dollars. We don't have the grant program like we do. We've out, we allocate those funds towards more marketing promotion to the community as an organization before, that was the, you know, more impactful expenditure for those dollars. But also, I mean, I don't think anybody's ever said that the pool's going to bring overnight visitors. Uh, you know, the impact that I think the pool would have is more on restaurants, the gas stations, you know, more businesses. I don't, I don't see people coming to the pool necessarily spending more than the same money. And that said, I do think, uh, I agree with you. If we have more softball, baseball tournaments, I think the pool helps attract the audience. So we've heard from tournament directors and people who go to those tournaments, they like having the pool and the bowling alley and the football courts and all that stuff out there. It is a draw to, to the folks that host those tournaments. I know the Parks Department in their budget this year, or proposed budget for the form, added somebody specifically to recruit, uh, youth sports tournaments to the community. Um, you know, of course, to, to, we disagree with the record, we know, we can. I don't know, is that it to your question?
Well, yeah, so now we're saying, you know, said, and I've seen reports that fifty-three percent, you, you folks have the ability to pee self-obsession in their town. So fifty-three percent of the people heading through this town, we don't know how much money they're spending here. I mean, I'm, folks, I'm a ten, I'm a friggin' flyer at restaurants. Ninety-eight percent of the restaurants in this town get a lot of money out of it. It is. But if we're peeing all those people, we don't know how much money they're spending here. So why can't we look for the alternative and private fundraising like we've done before and forget about this food and beverage tax? Let's do it the old fashioned way. And I agree with you.
Go ahead, Ian.
I have a couple of clarifications to help you guys, and I really am just out to get the facts, and I know those facts seem like they've been very scattered. Part of the reason it seems like our tail is, our head is chasing our tail, our tail is chasing our head, is because of deadlines that were imposed upon the pool committee that weren't none of our choices. So the ready project, we had to have a design for the ready project to even have the potential to grab those grant dollars for the project. So we had to have some kind of initial design. It wasn't like we said, this is our project. It was, this is what we proposed, please give us dollars to help accomplish this project. So that's number one. It wasn't a build or die, it was a build just so we could get money. Number two, we also were under very tight deadlines. We saw that we had some initial opportunity, and for the food and beverage tax to even be passed, again, we had some very tight deadlines to even get the opportunity to do that. And if we didn't do it in this legislative year, which was 2023, we were going to have to wait until 2025, another budget year. So all of these deadlines have been pushed on us because of the opportunity to get the dollars that we have. That being said, the dollars that we have, which is $3 million approximately, expires if it is not promised by 2024. So if we said, let's scrap the food and beverage tax, we think our community will raise $3 million because, again, we've gone to look at those pools and we know what the costs of those pools are. Teresa and several others that went to the projects can attest to the fact that when they draw, drew up that original design, they said just adding a separate splash pad was going to cost $3 to $4 million, just for a splash pad. So we're not trying to be extravagant in our expenses, but we've been to those pools, we've seen what they're spending on those pools, and if you do a little research, you'll see what the average of those are. That being said, we have promised, we're not trying to spend money, we're trying to just see what we can do for the money we have available. And if we say, okay, community, we're going to raise $3 million, we've got to do it within the next 12 months or we lose the first $3 million. So just wanted to make those facts known so you understand some of the things that we've been dealing with, and that's why the timeline has been kind of wonky. It hasn't been because of us, it's been because of the deadlines we've been jumping through to try to get this opportunity at all.
So if you build within your means of the $3 million, though, we got tomorrow.
We're not chasing three million.
Right? If we build within the means of the $3 million that we got, which is just more money that we've all already put in and they're letting us have some of it back.
Well, first of all, the $3 million will not build a pool.
You don't know that. You have no numbers whatsoever.
A splash pad, yes. We can have another splash pad.
But we don't even have an issue. No. How do we get a real idea?
Okay, now one at a time.
Then two, I'm going to get out right now. Money, oh, the money was, came from the federal government and the state government with the intention of drawing people to our region. So if we do that, then we're not using the money what it was intended to do.
Original intent was to refocus what we had.
No, that was not the intent of, of the ready grant.
That's what Brian had just said.
Yeah, it was, it was to make improvements to the pool.
That would draw people.
That would draw people, so you guys are both correct.
But then we get on another avenue of building way more than the $3 million, just by taxing more. I'm against taxing more. Everybody's taxed to death. The difference whether you can afford it depends on how big your paycheck is. Not all of us, the difference swing up getting bored and what our check is, is the same scale here. So the majority are taxed to death. We don't need more taxes for something that is, and, and again, in immunity, we've all helped the people, we've all been helping. But again, as I've told a couple of different people, I still never signed for somebody else to drive a Land Cruiser and not going to it. So that's actually the bottom line. If you can't, if we can't do it with the means that we have, and I'm not saying don't go to the public, maybe we raise another million. Maybe you raise two more million, three million, I don't know. And if that's what's there. But my next, my next biggest question is to this whole board. So on the 21st, we're getting the numbers on the 24th, but on the 21st first, you're going to make judgment on it?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ordinance. We have the public here.
Okay, well, how about now?
It could be.
About something said in stone earlier.
It could be, it could be tabled, it can be tabled.
Wait, wait, time out, time out, we're all, we're all with it, we're all with it. So we're going to make the, we're going to cast the vote at nine o'clock in the morning at the courthouse on something that we still don't know. And there's not going to be a time for you to share it with the public.
I'm totally on your side. I'm ready.
I did it. But I'm, I'm saying right here now, it just, can this board say in, in stone, give everybody here that it will be tabled?
I can't, we're not, listen, we're going to vote tonight, on the 21st. Okay. Can you?
Why would we have the first reading before we ever had our ducks in a row?
There's something funny about all this, because you go and you have the first reading we've ever did anything public.
I, yes, the, the ordinance was given to the council at the last meeting. They, they, and I talked to Janet about this, they take, they take the readings actually at the same meeting, so technically they did not have a formal reading or a formal vote at the last meeting.
But you're also not telling us that you're not going to vote on this next meeting until your ducks are in a row, because they are not in a row.
They can't make any decisions tonight, this is a public forum, a public meeting.
We know, I'm not saying it, but you've got to vote.
Guys, we're not stupid. Yeah, we're not stupid.
But you're chasing your day.
Yes. We are not chasing.
We have to bring that on each end.
Then say you're not going to vote at the next meeting until you get.
We can, we have to vote. Legally, you can't say what to say. We have to have a vote.
So, so you guys go to this meeting, your next meeting, and this could all go through. But you don't know that, Bill, you don't know that, you speculate.
We're, we're, we have to, we have to bring it up on each end, on the 21st. It has to be either tabled or voted on. This is, this is just for the process, Jamie. I'm not, I'm just going by the process. We did the same thing on, on, on the, on the, um, well, special purpose tax for jail and a couple of safety tax. We had to use the first time, we went through the reading the first time, we had a public hearing on it, the next meeting we vote. It's just a process to think of.
We were given a timeline by Barnes and Ford, we worked at legal consulting, we've worked with other counties on this project, and that is the timeline we've been following.
Then this meeting should have held, been held long longer.
This is the time that they suggested.
Yes, ma'am.
Will it be made publicly, what members vote yay or nay?
Yes, ma'am. It will be a roll call vote. Okay? We've already made that point, that's the last meeting, there will be a roll call vote. Now, we're just going to take a few more questions till about 7:30, and then we're going to, because we're on the food and beverage tax, I don't want to skip off to something else. Jim, you haven't said anything yet.
I haven't said anything yet. I've worked at all three different schools.
Before we should come out and talk up here, so everybody can hear what you're doing, please.
I've had the privilege to work at all three schools in our county, county schools and Greensburg schools. In our county, over 50% of the kids go to our schools on free and reduced meals. So that, to me, tells me that there's not prosperity out there. If over half the kids go to our school, they get free and reduced meals. And every year, our schools have a negative budgets on the bills. People that are able to afford it, they don't follow, but I still can't pay the bills, right? And the schools just mark that off. So we're going to charge kids $7, this will be our rule, sort of says here, they live in our county. And I see kids come to the school every day, they're wearing the same clothes they did 10, 12 weeks ago. He's got a pair of crocs on and no socks, and that's what it'd be with the snow blocks, too. And I'm looking at ways to how can I help these kids? How can I get these kids helped? I don't see how a pool is really going to help those kids. And in my eyesight, this seems like we're, we're doing a luxury. We got kids that are failing in our system, drive around Greensburg, drive around the county, we got a lot of poverty. We got, Greensburg's full of low-income housing. And then those housing are single parents and grandparents, or those kids or foster parents. I get to see these kids every day, and there's some sad, sad stories in our, in our county and our communities. And those are the things we should be helping. And I don't know how those kids are even going to afford to come to the pool if they can't afford a $3 meal at the school. So I would say.
I'm kind of ignoring you.
Oh, you're fine, I know. I'm new to the restaurant business, actually a year this summer. I bought Pop's Diner just down the road here. So, new to me, this is all kind of new, but as far as budget, I got gentlemen come in, I see, they get toast with water, get a biscuit, butter, one piece of French toast. So you're doing the vendings as far as concessions in here. How's that going to help me down there? How's it going to help carriers on the square? Tom and Trudy here, right next door, what's it going to do with their ice cream, their sundaes? Small business that you're crippling with a pool. So your last three pools here, North Vernon, Brookville, Shelbyville, all updated within the last six years. Si, almost 60% from the city. But we're going to try to pull from them to come to here, that $3.50 a gallon. So they're going to drive, come here, pay $7, $9, and then $4, $5 to eat. I mean, I don't know why, if my grandpa used to say, keep up with the Joneses, pretty much. I mean, no offense to the Joneses. That's what I'm saying, we're trying to pull people that are already at 60% because they're upgraded pools, we're going to pull them from all our other surrounding towns and go in debt. 3 million plus another eight, nine. But it's not helping any small business around here, but we're paying taxes for a pool. I got four kids, a lot of ones going to go there. I don't have any grandkids. I don't understand where it's going to benefit anywhere. Honestly, and I, you know, I keep hearing about the meeting, you're not going to vote, you're not going to vote. Kind of don't agree with it, really. I honestly just like to know, as far as this is a public meeting, correct, where you all stand individually. Do any of you own a restaurant that's going to be paying a 1% tax?
I manage a restaurant that's.
But are you paying the 1% tax out of you?
I am not.
Okay, so you're not going to field her over 20 years or 20 years, whatever it could be. You don't field it. You're going to come and eat, but you're not going to pay the 1%. I have to pay that.
You've added.
No, we don't.
Well, I mean, to be added, the one thing is, as far as, as far as you, it's not hitting you, Bill. It's us, it's all.
You're using our hard work.
Yeah, so I have to pay teenagers now and try to register again, change things, all these things, more costs. And I actually, the lady up here in the red links, I texted my accountant, almost $600 additional a year for her to do it. I, I messaged her, I just said, hey, Joe Martin, I'll leave this, quick question. She roughly estimates $600, $650 additional to me a year for this.
Mine was the same.
Yeah, I just offered, I was like, new question, so I'll just text it. Yeah, so I'm paying additional $650 a year. That's surprising.
Okay, I'm going to take one more question. I think we've heard it round and around. Okay, go all the way in the back.
I post being, living beyond our means, but I did wonder, can you answer when the jail tax was going to expire? We were promised that would go back to the, or the taxpayer. When did that expire?
It's on the 20-year, it's on the 20-year bond, too. It's on a 20-year bond.
Once it's, can't expire, it's only, it ain't pay the bond out early, then it's bound.
So is there a possibility to allocate those funds when the jail is, to do it then? Meaning, don't go beyond our means, take that additional, we're already being taxed.
It can only be used for the jail. But we could drop that tax, because we can't pay the jail off for 10 years when that extra money's accumulated. So when the 10-year hits, we're going to pay the junk off. Our goal was, we told the taxpayers this, and I'm going to tell you that I'm going to vote for it, is when the jail's paid for, that tax is done. And that's the intention. The issue was, we can't, the way it's written, we can't pay it off for 10 years, because it couldn't be paid. But we can at that 10-year point. So everything that we collected for the jail that's over and above what our payment is, that's just sitting there, and how to be paid on to that balance when that 10-year point hits. Does that answer your question?
I was just hoping that we're already paying in taxes.
Yeah, unfortunately, those things are set up to pay for something specific, just like the food and beverage tax, specifically for a pool and fairgrounds. It could be used for something else.
Sir, if you had a question, I'll take it.
I, I guess my question is, I'm loud enough, I shouldn't need a microphone. Your, your tax, your, your grant, $3.5 million?
No, it's on.
$3.5 million, correct?
Three million.
Three million, okay. When does it have to be spent?
It has to be committed by 2024, spent by 26.
Okay. Now then, you presented one design, and you already admit that was just a design to get us through the process, right?
It was a concept to see what could be on that footprint.
Where are the designs that we can afford?
Exactly, that's with the RFQ.
Okay, it's not going to come into the 24th?
Till af, till after that meeting.
Till after that meeting.
Which is why the committee is suggesting to the council that it's tabled.
Then why are we rushing this tax? It seems like it's being rushed. You've got until, when in 2024 to commit?
20, when in 24, well, actually, the state has come back and wanted us to commit it, you know, earlier, but in, but by, by, originally, it was December of 2024.
So you've got.
To commit.
All of next year to commit that money? The $3 million.
Yeah, yeah.
So where's a plan that lives within the budget, without this tax, that you've already admitted cannot pay for the current plan? Can't pay for it, you'll come up short.
And, and, and agree, that, that plan as a concept is what could fit on that footprint. That wasn't the actual, that wasn't the project, we have the RFQ out for the project. It's a whole, it's a whole process to do it, and we're, we're in the process of, of going through that. If you, if you, if you look at like construction timelines and such, and construction seasons, you know, and we have to, and also the processes of various types of construction, shall we say, like the build, operate, transfer. We have to allot for those funds so we can make sure that those funds are expended by 2026. If we lose a construction season going through a process, you know, we, we, we're not trying to push anything through. This is, as I said up there, this is all part of the process. This was originally all the part of the process. We, we came, as a, as a committee, we came to the community not only with the project, but the idea of how to fund that budget. If that's, if that's turned down, that's great. The council might come up with another idea for a budget, and the, the committee will be happy. Okay, we, we, from the ready side, we have funds that we need to use, and the, the, the public originally came out and said, yes, we need to do something out there with, which was, for a long time, our recreation center out there, we need to reinvest in it. We're trying to come up with an idea how to do that, and it's all part of the process.
I will say, I'm not against a pool project. I'm against this tax that you can't verify any numbers on, none, and you have until 2024.
We have, like to verify on what, what the tax would raise? Because we have those.
How much it's going to cost? Where are the money going to go? You've got it between the fairgrounds and the, and the.
Exactly, and that's part of the RFQ process.
You can't even tell us where the money's going to go. Are you going to do a $4 million pool and, and the rest of the money go to the fairgrounds? Are you going to commit $3 million to the fairground?
That's, that's up to, that's up to the.
You, you have, you have nothing.
We, we have no choice in where those funds go, that's up to the council.
Sir, let me carry on now. The tax hasn't passed.
I understand this.
We don't know where the money's going.
And, and there's no sense in rushing a vote on this hash if you got until 13 months to decide what the project's going to overall cost.
We're, we're the same way, we don't even have RFQ, and that's why the committee is suggesting not to vote on, on it the next, uh, next meeting.
That's your suggestion, not to vote on it?
Yeah, not to vote on it at the next, certainly not the next meeting.
He's going to make the recommendation that a vote not be taken the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what.
It's been presented with the council saying, we'll be on our agenda to go one way or the other. With Andy to you that way, it was.
This lady's been raising her hands for a while, and it's just been a little, a little under everybody else's ability to be seen.
Thank you. I have 10 grandkids from 15 to 18 months. I see this pool, they would love it. My concern is, during the daytime or nighttime or whatever, do we have a safe path to get those kids from town to the pool? That terrifies me. We've all driven on Park Road during the fair, it's terrifying. I drive down Park Road a lot, because I have grandkids right on the other side of that. Lot of walkers, lot of bikers. I feel like that needs to be considered with this project. How do we get the kids from town safely to the pool? Huge concern. I have daughters that work in medical, all of that.
Yeah, actually, that was part of the consideration for this project. You've heard, have you heard about the Park Road project and the project to add a walking slash biking trail down Park Road?
I've heard a lot of blushing about the Park Road project.
Maybe the commissioners have more information on that, but that project is going to happen, it's already a done deal.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to end the meeting on the public hearing. Like I said, it will be on the agenda in the 21st.
Is there any way that, um, there was, there was a comment made. Is there any way that, there was, there was a comment, maybe, hey, we're going to have this, this meeting, we're going to pass it at nine o'clock at whatever day it was. Can that be moved to the evening so more people can attend the meeting? Nobody has time, so that I can go out to eat.
I'm not sure we can get it advertised in time, Scott. Because it's the 21st, would have to be re-advertised. Shannon knows more about that than I do. We got time? Okay, it's up to the council.
I don't think it is. Well, I've, I've been on the council a long time, and I don't, I don't think the council's going to pass any new tax without having all the homework done on it and knowing what's going on, so. I feel confident that it, it has to come up in the agenda the next meeting, but I feel confident it's probably going to be tabled. I'm sure not going to vote for passing it without having the information, so. I can see where you're concerned, but I would be highly surprised if it got voted on the next meeting.
That answer your question pretty close?
I mean, morning, the evening's not going to make a whole lot of difference, or a vote.
What, morning or night?
That's pretty different. Yeah. Do you see the scratch at nine o'clock meetings in the morning? No, you did not. We may watch on W T R E, on YouTube, or whatever thing is there, and most of us cannot attend your meetings. We don't have that luxury.
I'll tell you what, we used to have a meeting at 6:30, and nobody attended them either, I can remember that. So we started at nine o'clock in the morning, because we do business, most of our business is done with the county employees and the county staff.
Well, we're the taxpayer, you're paying your county employees and your staff.
That's right.
It's our money that's the way. We have to set 30 meetings, are y'all going to come? Is it night? Or you're one person?
Yeah.
I would have to say most of this, if not more, would be in my meeting.
Okay, well, since I can't get very much, we'll see if we can get to the 21st meeting. Try to move it to 6 o'clock. We need to come here. We need to come back here, we'll have to have a caution. We'll have to carry on, Janet, and you. What do we have? We could advertise it next month, or this month, 21st, 6 o'clock here. About, I, you know, it'll just be on the agenda, I can't say it on here. I'm going to vote on a tax.
Real quick. This food and beverage tax is all prepared food, correct, or incorrect? Okay, we have county schools, prepare food in the cafeterias, is that excluded?
Excluded.
City schools excluded?
Excluded.
Nursing home facilities?
Excluded.
Hospital?
Hospital has a cafe, but I don't know if they're, that's a good question, that you have a cafe. Honda is included.
They're included?
Yes.
So people that eat lunch in the cafeteria, Honda, have to pay food and beverage tax?
We'll pay the food and beverage tax.
Thank you.
Honda's the dominating one.
Okay. I think we've discussed a little bit tonight, got a little bit, that just, uh, was that? Just move to 6 o'clock, 21st, we'll do it here.
Thank you for holding this meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It's part of the program, and I want everybody to know what's going on. I'm as transparent as you can get, I promise. No, I'm not. Okay, all, we say motion is true. Kenny makes motion, get 30 seconds, all of you, favorable. We vote. Thank you for...
I was attacking him, and you're just the only one that can give me any numbers. See, after I, after I sit down there, they understood like I was attacking them. I really wasn't, you're just the only one that can give me real numbers.